Why should the business community vote for you? You'll see the responses for those who chose to respond in there. We also have a government affairs committee that meets to create these questions with some input from our chamber members. We're going to have six of our candidates here with us this morning. Three of them had scheduling conflicts. So we'll have Kristen Alshier, Erica Bell, Mark Bell, Stacy Michael, Rich Owens, and Peter Perini. Last minute medical emergency, Sean Flaherty was going to be here, he just called us this morning, he can't make it. And then scheduling conflicts, we had Carolyn Anderson, Tiara Burnett, and Matt Schindler. So we'll hear from six of the candidates this morning. This morning's moderator is Jenny Bakos. I'll introduce her shortly, and she'll review some of the forum ground rules we're going to follow this morning. And Donna Mitchell is going to be serving as our timer. She'll talk about that. And the forum is on Facebook Live and it's being recorded. So we're glad you're joining us in either way this morning. And we have one elected official in addition to some of the incumbents running again for office. Matt Breeding, Washington County Treasurer, good morning, Mr. Breeding. Thank you for joining us. Give him a round of applause, he's handling the money for us. Now, the sponsor for our forums this year and for the last few years is Jemison Door Company. With us this morning, to say a few words, is Dwight Clark, the president. Help me welcome Dwight.
Hi, my name is Dwight Clark, and for over 118 years, the Jemison Door Company has been an integral part of the city of Hagerstown and the greater Washington County community. We feel it's an honor for us to sponsor events like this that we see benefit the community. Thank you.
You could never run for office with those short comments. Ha, ha, ha. I did, I just said hello to him this morning. Good morning. John Barr, county commissioner of president, is here this morning. Good morning, Commissioner Barr. Thank you for joining us. We, in addition to Dwight Clark, he's immediate past board chair. We have two other board members with us. Marion Waltermeyer, our current chamber board chair, and A. Perez, our board chair elect. So, good morning, let's give the round of applause, thank you. Also want to acknowledge, I saw him earlier, Dr. Jacob Ashby, USMH, is our Small Business of the Year business award winner. Good morning, Doctor, and thank you, congratulations. And just a couple shameless plugs for some upcoming events, and then we'll introduce Jenny, and then we'll get started. October 11th, I think that's this Friday, 7:30 a.m., we'll have Women Empowered at the Chamber Office. The topic is Building a Connection and Brand Boosting Newsletter. Speaker is Mindy Props, she's with Jenny Consulting Services. Your Next Customer is next Tuesday, the 15th, at the Chamber at 7:30. The topic is The Impact of Emotional Intelligence on the Customer Experience. Kelsey Palmer of Kite &amp; Anchor will be leading that discussion. That one is free and open to anybody to come, whether you're a chamber member or not. And then, next Wednesday, we come today, we'll have our Maryland 6th Congressional District Forum, right back here. Again, breakfast hits at 7:00. And then our October Bash, our Business and Social Hour, is October 17th this month. It's going to be at Middletown Valley Bank on Eastern Boulevard. And the prize drawing is up to $1,250, sponsored by Bank of Charleston. You have to be a chamber member, you have to be registered by noon that day, and you have to be present to win. And we'll look forward to that evening. On November 9th, a real special event, there's information on your table, we're having our First Annual Foundation Event, partnering with WCPS for our apprenticeship program here in Washington County. The information's on there with QR code, and we also have sponsorship opportunities. We really think it's important to support the apprenticeship program here, we're leading the state as a community. And all the proceeds are going to support our employers who bring on these apprentices. They have to pay them at least 450 hours at $15 an hour, and so we want to help underwrite that expense. So with that, it's now my privilege to introduce Jenny Bakos. She's a member of our Government Affairs Committee, she's the director of our library system. Please help me welcome Jenny Bakos.
That is a little tall. Hi. Good morning, everyone. My name is Jenny Bakos, and I'm the executive director of the Washington County Free Library. Paul, do I invite everyone up? Thank you. I want to start off with just a handful of reminders about today's event. All candidates will be asked all questions. You'll have 60 seconds to respond to the question. The last question we'll allow for 90 seconds. Donna will act as timekeeper. She will put up a yellow card when you have 15 seconds left, and a red card for the candidates to stop. You are able to finish your statement but not start a new one. I will be referring to you only by your last name. Please ask me if you need the question repeated. This is an educational opportunity for the community to learn more about you and your platform. It is not a debate. Please remain civil and on topic to the best, utilize the time we have together this morning. So I'll be starting with you, Mr. Alshier. Can you please introduce yourself and tell us why you're seeking this position?
Morning, everyone. Thanks for having me. I'm Kristen Alshier. I've lived in Hagerstown all my life, raised my family here, my wife and five children. I manage the town of Myersville in Frederick County. I think that the answer is the same this sixth time around as it has been the last five times. I want this position because I want to be here to help the community that I want to live in.
Thank you. Ms. Bell?
Good morning. My name is Erica Bell. I am also born and raised here, and also raising my two girls here. I'm a small business owner downtown Hagerstown, and I want to continue to be a servant to the community. It is important to me that the community knows that I'm here, that I can be a voice for you guys, and, yep, that's why I'm seeking.
Mr. Bell?
Hi, good morning. My name is Mark Bell. My wife and I recently retired about 19 months ago, came back from Virginia. My parents' house has been, we've been there for 50 years on Owen Drive. The city, from going around and talking to people, they don't seem to be happy with the direction that's currently existing, and they would like it to be in a different direction. That's why I'm running.
Thank you. Ms. Michael?
Hi, I'm Stacy Michael, and I'm running for city council, obviously, because I'm up here. Thank you for having me this morning. There are really two reasons why I decided to run. I am a lifelong resident, but I realize that the biggest influence on my life and on people that live here is right here in the community. It's not down the road, it's not the other elections, those are certainly important, but right here makes the biggest difference. And I think I can help. I think I have a skill set that is going to help the city council and the community.
Thank you. Mr. Owens?
Morning. My name is Richard Owens, and my wife and I moved into Hagerstown in fall of '13, and we have always enjoyed the fact that it is a beautiful city. It has so much going for it. We have been working very hard as just regular citizens up until this point. We opened a business down on Potomac Street, the Inon Potomac, and it has been doing well. But that experience has led me to notice how things work in the city, and I have been watching a lot of good things happening in the city, but I've noticed a lot of things that are just, for some reason, don't seem to change. And I finally just decided that I wanted to see what I could do with my skill set and see what I could do to help the city. So I'm asking people to vote for me. Thank you.
And finally, Mr. Perini?
Good morning. I'm Peter Perini, currently serve on the council. I've lived in the Hagerstown area all but one year of my life, and it's been a privilege to serve as a councilman. And I'm seeking reelection because the work of the council, a lot of which is, really goes unseen, it's not the flashy, you know, headline grabbing stuff, that's the really important work of Hagerstown. And I bring a business perspective to the council, and I hope to be able to continue to do that and do the good work that the council's been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. This next section, this first section of questions is about the role of the council members in moving Hagerstown forward. What does a healthy and vibrant city center look like, and what is one key issue we need to address to ensure we get and stay there? Mr. Owen?
I apologize. I am hard of hearing, and it's very difficult. I do a lot of lip reading.
Okay, I'll do that again. That's not a problem. It's all right.
This is repeated, I do apologize.
What does a healthy and vibrant city center look like, and what is one key issue we need to address to ensure we get and stay there?
I think a vibrant city is one where the community is actively going downtown, enjoying the businesses, the restaurants, the entertainment district, the parks, everything that we have. And this is what I said earlier, this is a beautiful city. We have all of those things in place, but it is right now, there is a word out there that people are afraid to go downtown. And I think a vibrant downtown needs to remove that stigma, that feeling that people can't go down there because they're going to be harassed or whatever, ask for change, things like that. And I think that looking at the way to change that is, is we need to enact things that will help people see that it is not dangerous, that it is a place that we can take our families and enjoy a day in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question, Ms. Michael?
So my vision of a vibrant downtown is seeing kids ride their bikes and families walking in and out of stores. I think we need to have a plan for economic development, and what stores do we want downtown? It wouldn't matter what day of the week, you would see activity downtown and people out and walking and families together. That's, would be my vision for downtown. I think that there's gaps. I think that we have a beautiful ballpark. I don't think that we have connected the businesses to that activity. A lot of people park, they go to the ballpark, they leave, they don't spend time down there. And I think that there's various reasons. One are the parking. I don't think we're there yet to raise the parking fees, we need to find a way around that. So we need to make that connection between driving people downtown, having stores that they will be there for, and making it a success all the way around.
Thank you. Mr. Alshier?
I've been hearing that downtown's unsafe probably since I was a kid, coming down in from the south end, probably multiple times a week to go to the library and then run across the street to Barnwood Books and see what books I wanted to grab and take home. I've never felt unsafe in that environment, and I don't think that that message is ever going to, like, not exist in any sort of urban environment community. But for me, downtown's vibrancy is measured by the marketability of its buildings. Our buildings downtown have to be competitively marketable. That's why we created the first third program to try and spawn some investment in a lot of the buildings that we saw at that time that, you know, sat empty. And so I think the first third program was a good opportunity to make that happen.
Mr. Bell?
I think of downtown, the way it is currently, we have the best reactive police force in the area, but we are lacking in having officers being able to be on the streets and restaurants and the shops to make the, to be able to be proactive instead of reactive. That, the current raise, I think, I believe, is, from my understanding, is still $5,000 under what the surrounding jurisdictions offers. Why would you come here? So even though it's been said that everyone is hiring, I don't see them lining up in droves to fill the police force.
Mr. Perini?
Well, first, first I'll say a couple of things. The stating was mentioned, there were, I think it was advertised, over 175,000 visitors to Meritus Park between May and the end of the baseball season, and there was not one reported incident. So I'm going to disagree with the premise that Hagerstown, downtown Hagerstown, in any way is dangerous for the average citizen that's coming down, coming downtown. My vision for a vibrant downtown has two components, because at the end of the day, we need a vibrant community of citizens, and those two components is housing and jobs. And I think they're linked together. And finally, I will say that while we have some excellent businesses, and I'll point to Don Bowman and the work that he's done, but we do need to increase the number of businesses downtown.
Thank you. Ms. Bell?
Because we have so many answers, can you repeat the question?
Of course. What does a healthy and vibrant city center look like, and what is one key issue we need to address to ensure we get and we stay there?
Yeah, so I'm going to agree with Councilman Alshier when, just being born and raised here, I've never felt downtown was unsafe. I mean, I've walked downtown since I was a kid, and I've never felt, you know, I needed a parent, you know, just being younger when you get that permission to be able, and I'm from the Jonathan Street community, so I know what it feels like to walk down the alley and go downtown. My goal is, because I'm a small business owner, to continue that growth, to continue to let people thrive downtown. It's the businesses downtown currently that we need to make sure that we continue to uplift, and that they have, that they also have goals that they can meet, that they also are first aware of the funding that's available for them, so they can keep growing, they can keep succeeding, and it's the collaboration we also need. I see so many businesses that collaborate. I've collaborated with so many, I've collaborated with the chamber, I've collaborated with other businesses, and it's the growth and development that we need to continue to allow.
Thank you very much. Many people think that a vibrant business environment is for the downtown health of the city, is important for the downtown health of the city. What do business owners want you to do when you are in office? Mr. Bell?
I think they want, an easing of some of the regulations, so they're not handcuffed. I would propose to eliminate the business personal property tax, would help small and large businesses as well. You lower the cost, you level the playing field, surrounding jurisdictions, for example, Frederick is probably stealing a lot of our jobs. It's more friendly for them to be in this environment. It would allow you to invest and reinvest, to upgrade your infrastructure. You'd also be able to help small, again, small and large businesses as well.
Thank you. Mr. Alshier?
The question's funny, because 20 years ago, I remember coming to these forums and screaming that, you know, the downtown is a dying entity and it needs help, and the business community didn't seem real focused on that fact. It wasn't until probably about 10 years ago that the business community got real serious about recognizing that, and I think the saying at that time was, if Hagerstown dies, the county dies. And so the business community got real serious about investing in downtown, and I think it speaks to my prior comment, that, you know, we need to create investment in the buildings so that businesses can go into those buildings, so that housing can go into those buildings. The worst thing about downtown from that period to now was the emptiness, the vacancy that existed. You know, a million square feet of built space in downtown was vacant 10 years ago. We have worked steadily to knock that down and make the buildings more marketable for that to happen.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. Owens?
What business owners want, I believe that what business owners want is to be able to conduct business without having to deal with the interference of panhandling, people sleeping in doorways, people that have been, excuse me, relieving themselves on their doorsteps, having to come in and deal with that just as they start their workday. That is just one point. I think that we also need to look at the fact that businesses need to have a working relationship with the city that allows them some latitude in the way they do business as far as maybe how we can, how we would basically go ahead and allow business to be, I apologize. They need clear lines that they can work within so that they understand what they're being required to do, and I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bell?
So I'm going to go a different route, only because I am a small business owner. I think we want the financials to be more clear for us. When you fill out the application for funding, it is extremely difficult to understand. You, you know, so my goal is to set aside a group to where us as business owners come together and we work together to fill out the application together, to get the funding together. So anybody that knows a little bit more about it, we can work together and do it together. We are not Frederick, we will never be Frederick, so we need to focus on our own downtown and build up our own. As far as the homeless asking for change or a dollar, you'll get that any, anywhere. I mean, we can live anywhere and somebody's going to ask for a dollar. You'd be in the parking lot way at the end of the highway and they'll ask you for a dollar. If you got it, give it, if you don't, just turn them away.
Thank you. Mr. Perini?
As a, as a business owner myself, I think that what businesses are looking for are two things in government, consistency and cooperation. And those are things that I've been, in my time on the council, been trying to work with staff and move in that direction. Consistency because a business doesn't function well if the rules change from, you know, week to week, month to month, year to year. The rules need to be consistent. But also cooperation. And I characterize that with the phrase, "How do we get to yes?", which a friend of mine shared with me a year or so ago. How can we create a culture within the city government to help the businesses, as Erica just mentioned, get the information they need and the services that they need? Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Michael?
I think that the businesses downtown, they want a plan, not just a plan for today. They want a plan that stretches out a year, four years, eight years, 10 years, and they want support to know that the city has their back and that they're going to do everything that they can to drive business into their business. I think we've done a lot of things that get us partway there. We're having events downtown, okay, that drives people downtown, but do they leave after that? What is the connection between having an event and getting them there? I think the best event that I saw was something like Galentine's Day, where it encouraged businesses to be part of that, and it encouraged then the people that are taking part in that event to go into the businesses. They would get rewards, they had different things that were going on. That's what businesses want. They want business, they want support from the city, and they want to know that we have a plan that's going to continue to grow the downtown area and give them help to drive in business.
Thank you. Next question. Some developers have expressed concerns of a can't do versus a can do approach to working with the city. How can the city ensure the process of development is solution focused? Mr. Perini?
Hey, you implement a culture of, "How do we get to yes?" And, look, it's sometimes a characteristic, characterization of bureaucracy that says that, you know, "We've been here, developers have come and go, business owners have come and gone, but we're always here." But at the same time, for the person that's making the ask, for the business owner that's making the ask, it's their first time, or they're the ones that are dealing with the issue. So I've been encouraging, and we were working towards kind of modifying the culture and finding a way that, whether it's, you know, building permits and code administration, planning, zoning, or any of those features, how do we get to a point where we're working with developers to make sure that their product is the right product, but at the same time meets all the criteria, all the rules? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alshier?
Well, I think that the comment that Peter made earlier is a comment that I strive to employ where I work, and that is consistency within that governmental process. I don't think that's a matter of not wanting to work with or wanting to work with proposals to come before a government, but rather applying with consistency the rules that we have enacted for that process. You know, I go back to the significant investment on Basil Boulevard with the folks from Northgate, who had nothing but good things to say about how that process occurred and was facilitated. That's a major investment. I go to a smaller example, which is the, the housing redevelopment there next to Hatters Plaza near the stadium. Again, those owners had a good experience working through that. So I think it would have to be a case by case basis to hear what exactly those specific instances are where those developers are saying that they're not having that good experience.
Ms. Michael?
I think that we need to seriously take a look at our permitting, our code, our inspection process. I've talked to several business owners that hit roadblocks. They feel like they're held up, they're not able to open things on time, they're not able to get things done, it's frustrating to them, and I think that is a serious problem that we need to look at. Why are we not having consistency, to Christian's point? Why are we having these roadblocks for our business owners? I've talked to one person that's trying to open up a business downtown, they keep hitting roadblock after roadblock, and they're ready to go to Chambersburg. It's a unique business. We don't have a business like this, this one downtown. And they're going to leave because we can't get it done. We're holding them up. So we need to look at that, and we need to change the way that process works. We need to examine it and see what's broken, and why I'm hearing complaint after complaint.
Mr. Bell?
Need to level the application across the field, make it competitive for everyone, they have the same rules. Consistency would be a big thing, and even application, I do hear from time to time that people run into different things under the same circumstance, and frustration and delays, it would cause the business.
Ms. Bell?
I would say that one thing that I wanted to implement was a book, not necessarily a book, maybe like a pamphlet or a couple sheets, that kind of lays out the outline of what you need to do first as a business owner, that you got this walkthrough. So as long as you're following the walkthrough, then it shouldn't be any hiccups, and if it is, then it is kind of like on, on the city. So you got this book and, or a sheet, that you're going by, step by step, and, I mean, even if the first, number one just says, "Fill out the application," you know, as long as you're going step by step by this guide, that it, you know, it implements all the steps that you need to open your business. So code is in there, and who you call and all that, and it, it just helps. Also, so many of the buildings downtown are owned by people out of town, and they don't care about our economics here, they don't care that the, you know, your, excuse me, your business is struggling, they just, every month want, want the rent. So a lot, like, for example, the personal.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Owens?
I think that this really comes down to, every one of these was actually good points. I agree with all of them. But my point would be that I think it comes down to communication between the business owner, the individual, and the city. The city needs to be consistent in its policy as the homeowner or business owner. The city needs to be consistent in, in its policy, as the homeowner or business owner needs to be telling them exactly what it is that they want and expect from them. I think, my wife and I, we went through the entire process with our business, and I will tell you, it was a wonderful experience. But there were hiccups, and there were things that I, I hear in this forum so far that we need to look at, and that would be honest communication. I don't mean that anyone's being dishonest, but the fact that things just weren't being said, that would be simple things that would have helped me or another person alleviate the problem that occurs later on. A little bit of help communicating that way. People needed to be smoother, a nice transition, and having that information in front of them will certainly make it better for all.
Thank you. How do you propose to address the city's housing needs? Ms. Bell?
Downtown?
Yes, was the city's housing needs in total.
Well, I know that a lot of ti, well, I'm on the committee for the Neighborhood Choice, and it is really gaining some momentum. So it, it needs to be affordable, you know, if you're, especially if you're downtown, you need to know that you can, I think, anywhere, you need to know that you can live, work, and play there. So it needs to be affordable for all them, for all them three reasons. So it's just the affordability of it.
Thank you. Mr. Perini?
I'm gonna take five seconds to go back to the previous question. For anybody that's watching, everybody that's here that wants to talk about opening or continuing their business, the City Department Economic Development is there to help, and I encourage everyone that it needs help to reach out to the EDC. Regarding housing, Donna would have to turn off her timer because I could talk an hour about this, so I'm gonna pick one specific thing. And I don't mean to be negative about it, but if I had to pick one little sliver in 30 seconds, it's gonna be, as was mentioned, there are a lot of properties that are owned by people who don't care about the property or the people in them, and we need to fix that. The city has started, two administrations ago, the rental licensure program, which landlords had a fit about, but it's working. It's helping. It's helping the good landlords. It's also helping the good tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Owens?
Great points. I think to make homes affordable, we have a plethora of homes that are available. There are grants in the city that people can and do use and utilize that certainly make the cost of getting a home, moving into one in town. Economically, we would need to, again, we go back to economic development. We need to have businesses. We need to have stuff downtown and in the surrounding areas, which will employ people. We need to have that business drawn in. That's part of economic development there. I think that as far as affordability, the process, i.e., contractors, again, permitting, they need to have clear and concise discussion, listen to what people are saying, and create an environment where people can save intensive and create the jobs that people need to live in these places.
Thank you. Mr. Alshire?
Can you, can you repeat the question?
Of course. How do you propose to address the city's housing needs?
So first of all, the city doesn't have housing needs. The city doesn't have a housing problem. The nation has a housing shortage problem. That's a reality. We hear in every jurisdiction across the land that we go, and so we need to build more houses. And not just single types of houses, we need to build more of all types of houses. Before the pandemic, I'm sorry, before, yeah, before the, in 2019, there were roughly 1,600 houses in the market in Washington County for sale. If you go out on that market right now, there's probably about 250. That's the decline we've seen, while at the same time, we've seen the interest rate to purchase that house go way up. And if anybody was at the state of the city, I did a little tongue-in-cheek with my part of the state of the city, but it was truth in that where I started out in that presentation that says, "We can't have people living in hotels. That cannot be the solution, so we need to build more housing, and we need to build more of all types of housing so that people can progress through those types of levels of houses that they want to live in and buy and rent in in order for that to happen." And I think the city's been pretty good at approving new housing starts in the last couple of years to make that happen.
Thank you. Ms. Michael?
So I agree with Kristen. It is a supply and a demand issue. I think COVID did not help this community at all, but we'll have to recognize that we do have some good landlords. Like, there, there are good people out there that are renting, but we also have to acknowledge that as prices raised for products, like washers and dryers and refrigerators, people that are property managers, it raised for them as well. I think we need to be looking to bring developers here to build. I think we need to work with them to have additional housing that is affordable housing. So if they have a plan to build 100 houses, maybe we can get them to build 50 more that are affordable. I think we need to work with agencies like the Hagerstown Housing Authority, who has Choice Neighborhood going on right now, to use that to help us. I think there's a lot of different opportunities, but we need to be working with property owners. We need to be trying to get property owners to come here, and I think we need to, again, be looking at.
Thank you. Mr. Bell?
And walking around a lot of Hagerstown, I've seen a lot of houses that are condemned or abandoned. Getting those back into a usable format where they, they're producing tax revenue would be most helpful. Expanding the first-time home buyers, grants, if they're available, would help bring more people. Once you bring up the neighborhoods, you get, you get more people to want to come into the area, and that would attract builders. Thank you.
Thank you. This next section of questions is about the financial responsibility of the council. Hagerstown has been taking consistent steps to move the city forward economically. What are the next steps for expanding the city's infrastructure and community assets? Mr. Owens?
Community what?
Community assets.
Assets?
Assets.
Assets. Community assets. I think, moving forward, that we need to be looking at ways that we can increase revenue, i.e., like the stadium, 175,000 people came to this city. We saw an influx come in through that. We need more events that are going to be like that. I think as far as being able to create income or assets, the city needs to perhaps purchase or take properties that are not in use, i.e., some of the abandoned buildings, maybe go in and find out if there is a way to get the owners of these places to either pay up and get them up and running, or take them and use them otherwise in ways that we could, the city would be able to resell them or, or put them into different uses to bring in more revenue.
Thank you. Ms. Michael?
So I, I think we all have to recognize that community development equals economic development. We need to be making this a place that people want to come to work and live, and that will open up opportunities for them to open up businesses, which will have a direct reflection on how well the city is doing. I think we need to make sure that our staff is looking for grant opportunities. I know that there's an opportunity out there right now that you can use to open up a business, but there's also grant opportunities out there to fix up your housing if you meet certain requirements. And there are definitely people in this area that need to take advantage of that. They need to know about those programs. So I, I think both of those things, trying to continue to develop our community and drive people here, to make it a better place to live and work, is gonna be a big thing, and then continuing to make sure that we are continuing to have the right type of businesses open to drive business just all over Hagerstown.
Thank you. Mr. Perini?
First of all, I think this is an excellent group of questions, an excellent topic, because in my opinion, as a councilman, the most important thing that the council members are responsible for is fiscal responsibility, to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. I think that to expand infrastructure, it costs money, and the city relies on not only our full faith and credit citizens, but also on our other government partners, the county, the state, and even the federal government. So currently, we are making great progress on the latter, moving forward with developing a program that will be unveiled the beginning of the year to enhance our federal relationship. In addition, we continue to work and build on our state and county relationships. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bell?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Of course. Hagerstown has been taking consistent steps to move the city forward economically. What are the next steps for expanding the city's infrastructure and community assets?
I definitely feel it's all about collaboration. One, one group of people can't do it by themselves, so they need people that can come in with different ideas, that we can all collab together. As far as like the businesses that are abandoned, I just know this just from inquiring about a piece of land on Jonathan Street. It, it, it's a process. It's not like it's abandoned and you can just take it over. You know, the person might have passed away, or they may have relatives. It's processes and steps. Do I feel like that process can be a little different to where it's implemented to, you know, after a certain time? Yes, but the, the city has codes and stuff that we, you know, need to understand and need to follow and go by. But I feel like what the current council has been doing now has been amazing. I've been following it, and we can only get better if we come together.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bell?
As, as a beginning, the, the current buildings that are vacant downtown, if they're not gonna get them in an operating condition, at least make them clean them up so that there's not a blight on the community. People who see boarded-up windows and signs and broken windows and things, why would you want to come here? A vibrant downtown, if, if people are walking around and, again, asking for, for this, that, or the other from you while you're trying to conduct your business, enjoy your day, businesses aren't gonna want to expand here. I mean, I don't, I can't imagine any, anyone wanting to step over someone on the sidewalk to have to come into their business. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alshire?
You know, I was just in Charleston with my daughter a few weeks ago, visiting for college, and we were going to a bagel shop. I don't know if you've been to Charleston recently, it's the first time I've ever been there, but what they're doing with the buildings is, is exactly what Mr. Bell's talking about. And I watched about 20 people step over a guy to go get their bagel and coffee that morning, and what I did was gave that gentleman $20, because I couldn't believe you would invest like that in that community and watch people just step over somebody like that, probably on a regular basis, and take that approach to life. So I don't subscribe to that, number one. But for government, we invest in infrastructure, and the best thing we can do when we invest in infrastructure is make sure that we're consistent in how we do that, especially where we do that, because that's where business follows. So when business is trying to figure out where we're gonna extend our Nest Water and Sewer Line, place our next parking deck, extend our electric light utility system, business wants to know where we're going to do that. We need to be consistent with where we do that so that business can follow that direction and that infrastructure and make investment in those places where we do those things.
Thank you. The business community is concerned about recent strong disagreements between the city and the county. How do you plan to address issues with your colleagues in the county? Ms. Michael?
So I think that we need to establish regular meetings, and I think we need to look for common ground that we can agree on. The things that we can't agree on, we figure out how we're gonna address them, but the things that we can agree on, we're gonna be stronger. Honestly, over the past couple of weeks, what I have realized is that if you're going to take this role, you check your ego at the door, and if you have hurt feelings over something that was said, you let it go. You don't keep bringing it up. You don't keep jabbing. You move forward and you work with them. And that's what needs to happen, and it's not just at the county level. It needs to happen at the state level. When I asked about the issues that seem to be going on between the city and the county, I was told, staff works great behind the scenes. It is in the public. I don't care if it's in the public. It needs to be a united forum. We, as a city, are part of the county, and the county serves all municipalities, and we need to work together. We are the largest.
Thank you. Mr. Bell?
Well, the, joining of the two, realize that we're partners. We're not entitled. They are, they have, the county has more resources, but at the same time, we're, we're just one, one piece of that, that puzzle. Having the, the county to, you know, again, not taking an entitled position, because we are the city of Hagerstown, to work with them and understand what their limitations are, what they can do and what they can't do for the city.
Mr. Owens?
I think these are all excellent points. I, it comes back to really being willing to, as she said, put down your egos and really talking and listening. We need to do more listening when we are dealing with people than talking, because a lot of times, we're, we're not hearing it. I find this all the time, just anywhere, church, school, anywhere. People are more interested, they've already created the idea in their head. If we could just start listening to each individual as who they are, from where they're coming from, be it county, state, federal, and get off of the, "Well, we've always done it that way. That's my attitude, blah, blah, blah." We really need to start listening to people and stop talking. We would communicate far, far better.
Ms. Bell?
I definitely feel like it's all about collaboration as well. If we can't work together, you know, we'll, we'll still continue to struggle with the issues that the city is having. So I definitely feel like it's just about collaboration.
Mr. Alshire?
I mean, the reality is municipal and county governments across this state and probably across every state have disagreements from time to time. They also find plenty of areas where they agree on, and as noted, our staffs work together regardless of that sort of winds of, of electoral change. That happens. A good example is I-81, the Community Coalition Group. You know, we're all partners in that. We take our best things we can down to the state every year in a collaborative effort. So those things happen. We have disagreements over time. That's just a reality. I think one of the biggest things that impact that is partisan politics. And I'll give you this example. I think that President Barr is exactly the right person to be president of the Board of County Commissioners. I have a great relationship with him. I have a great relationship with Mr. Klein and a couple of the other commissioners. But Mr. Barr ran for county commissioner as a Republican, got elected as president, ran as an independent, suddenly wasn't electable, runs again as a Republican, gets elected as a president of county commissioners. We need to get rid of partisan politics in these local processes.
Mr. Perini?
It's, it's hard to follow that, Councilman Alshire, because that hit the nail on the head. I'm sitting here thinking about some of the other answers and about collaboration and so forth, and that is all true. But, you know, it's a two-way street. The city, in my opinion, continues to get struck and then turn the other cheek. And I think that there needs to be a realization, because the premise of your question was that there is concern about the city-county relationship. It's the county that's suing the city right now as we speak. It's the county who is preparing another lawsuit against the city as we speak. It is the county that is looking to move county assets outside of the city, in my opinion, just for spite. So I think you have to look at the real picture to answer that question. And I'm gonna say kudos to John Barr for standing up for what's right.
Thank you. Next, we'll be talking about specific challenges facing our city. The city of Hagerstown, like others across the United States, continues to grapple with addiction and homelessness. What do you think the city should be doing? Mr. Bell? Mr. Bell?
Crime, safety, drugs, and accountability are what I was, my platform to run on. I live on Nolan Drive, close to Nolan Village. There was a proposal that didn't go forward for a drug village there, which I think is a good idea, but not inside the city limits, to take it outside of the city, to address these people that need help with compassion, but to make everyone, anyone in the city in any, any neighborhood or jurisdiction shouldn't have, you know, they, it shouldn't be in anyone's neighborhood within the city limits. Thank you.
Mr. Owens?
Excellent points. My wife and I, we live right on Potomac Street, a couple of blocks off of the city center, and we literally see this every day, drugs and the, and the consequence of such. The resources and stuff that are going into just the daily calls that the police, fire and rescue have to do is, is just phenomenal. What I would think that needs to happen is, is we really need to focus more on getting organizations in the city to talk to each other, that we can pool their resources, get people working together, that they know what the neighbors are doing to help combat this problem. Because what's happening here is, we have a lot of little isolated incidents that everybody's like, kind of surprised about it, but you know, it's a big problem, but everybody's doing their little thing, not really knowing what the others are doing. I think it's very important that we combine together, create working groups that will help each other to collaborate.
Mr. Perini?
Jenny, could, could you go ahead and repeat the question, please?
Of course. The business, oh wait, I'm sorry. The city of Hagerstown, like others across the United States, continues to grapple with addiction and homelessness. What do you think the city should be doing?
So, I, I'm glad that your question identifies that this is not just a Hagerstown problem, it's not just a Washington County problem, it's not just a Maryland problem, it's a national issue. Over the course of the last eight to 10 weeks, the council has been hosting various groups to talk about a, a, a number of issues. And I would encourage everyone to go back and watch those videos of those sessions, and there's going to be a recap soon, because the answer to that question could take hours to discuss. Having said that, I think what we've started and what we're working on is to work, again, with our other government partners, nonprofit, non-governmental agencies, and other organizations to ensure that everyone is working together to solving this issue, including the Maryland opioid response department.
Ms. Michael?
So I think there are a couple of things that we need to kind of alter our view. Number one, I think if we want to change things down the road, we need to be looking at prevention and how we get to our youth, and make sure that the mistakes that have happened with people right now that are causing addiction, maybe even mental health and some other areas of homelessness, like we need to get to our kids, and we need to talk to them, and we need to educate them, because if we don't start with prevention, the numbers are just going to continue the way that we're seeing them now. So I think that's one big thing that we need to change. I think the other thing is, we need to be working with agencies. I know that I went around and met with several of them to come up with solutions, and I think we need to look at what's worked across the nation and what hasn't worked. There's the homeless coalition, I think there needs to also be a coalition for recovery, and I think we need to be, again, meeting with those agencies, seeing what their ideas are, and then challenging the agencies to look at what's working in other communities, and are those communities, you know, the same as ours, and can we take anything from that and make improvements to help?
Mr. Alshire?
I think Peter's right regarding the meetings we've been having in recent weeks. And I think that if anybody has a chance to go back and watch last week's meeting, where we met with folks from Serenity and Brooks House and Gatekeepers and a couple of others, one of the things, one, it was a very enlightening discussion with groups that we typically just don't operate in the same avenues with, you know, because they're, they're private and we're public entities. But one of the things that was noted in that was accountability. Accountability of the sober houses, which are propped up and created and exist and operated largely in our urban core, but they have operations throughout the county. But the gentleman from Frederick that spoke to us, if anybody has a chance to listen to him, and the comments that he made, and the things that they do in, in the jurisdictions where he's at, and employing his skills, it was an enlightening conversation and things that I think that this council took to heart and could employ here, but it's going to take some state help to do that.
Ms. Bell?
I definitely feel like, well, I've watched the, a couple of the council meetings where they had a couple of the different resource, resources speak, and it really opened my eyes that I did not know how many resources were available. And I think that's the problem, that a lot of the community don't know how many resources are out there. So if the community does their due diligence and learns about these different resources, we can help a person. You know, if it's just a person that you see on a day-to-day that you know that they need help, you know the different resources that are available to them. But it's also more than that, it's after the fact. After they get help, then what? Do they have their driver's license? Do they have their birth certificate? Do they have their social security card to obtain a job? They need all these things. The, these, them three things are vital to getting a job, to getting housing, funding, anything like that. Like your identification is your person. Like you can't do anything without that. They have to know who you are to be able to place you where you need to be.
Our city is becoming more culturally and ethnically diverse. Close to 14% of our residents are African-American, and 7% are Hispanic. What can you, as a council member, do to help engage minority communities? Mr. Alshire?
Well, I think you have to cultivate that change equitably. I mean, that's the bottom line. You have to make sure that every opportunity that you offer through that governmental process is equitable to every individual seeking out those services, that assistance, that leg up when it comes to infrastructure and investment. And you have to apply all of the rules and regulations that you have, again, equitably to everyone.
Ms. Bell?
Well, I am a black woman, and I grew up in the Jonathan Street area, so the black-owned businesses on Potomac are amazing right now. You, this, this has to be record-breaking. It's not like you have seen this in the past, so I'm very proud of the steps that, you know, our people of color have made, the Latinos, the blacks, and also, my duty is to bring, and I'm not, I don't know if any of the council that are on here, Jonathan Street is currently redlined, how's my Alshire, is that? To where I believe it's only lined for residential. I want to take that away and allow the people to bring businesses back to their community, where it once was. There were once barber shops and other little shops and little bars and, and, you know, just different opportunities for them. I feel like it's important for them to be able to bring businesses back to their own communities.
Ms. Michael?
So I've seen a lot of improvements when it comes to diversity. I know that there have been discussions, and I, and I think it's been implemented at the city meetings to have things not just in English, but also in Latin and in Spanish, so that the diverse community that we have can have access to them and understand them. I do think that we need some sort of center to bridge the gap, so that when those members that come here don't speak our language, that they have a way that they can communicate and somebody there that can bridge the gap, and maybe even get them engaged in learning English. But I think that the bottom line is, you have to meet them where they are. They're in the community, they, whether they have a business or an event that is culturally diverse, we need to make sure that we're there, especially as representatives of the city and community leaders. You know, whether or not I may get onto the city council, I should be there, I should be meeting people, and I should be getting to know them. And then that's how we bridge the gap and we become a community together.
Mr. Bell?
Being unfamiliar with some of the communities, meeting where they are, finding out their, their needs to understand and seeing what, what they see as success going forward. The challenges they have, we may not be aware of, so going forward, try to make everyone successful.
Mr. Perini?
Usually, the discussion of diversity is centered around, I should, I should say, comes from kind of the social perspective. But I'd like to look at it for a second from the business perspective, because one of the things that I'm a proponent of is generational wealth building. I have been for a long time, but it really kind of came home to me as I worked with and on the campaign for Wes Moore for governor, because one of Governor's, Moore's, one of Governor's, Governor Moore's most significant issues was, how do we not leave anyone behind? And I think a, one of the components is generational wealth building. And so that's not only helping people start a business, a small business, a larger business, but then how does that business succeed and then get, have a succession plan for generation after generation? That's how we break the cycle.
Mr. Owens?
I believe that cultural diversity is literally what makes a city vibrant. I think it is the melding of all different walks of life, as far as race, creed, you know, gender, all of that. I think it's so important that we respect the folks that are not from around here, that we look at what they bring to our society. I came from a different area. I was born and raised in Virginia, came here with my wife in 13, as I said, you know, to see the way it's being done up here and to adjust to that, but at the same time, have you adjust to me. And I say this as far as people culturally from other areas, you know what? We need to be accepting of the fact that maybe they're having a hard time learning English, maybe they do things a little bit differently, and we need to be a little bit more patient. I think that cultural diversity is the vibrant fabric of the society.
Thank you. The last question is, why should we vote for you? Ms. Michael?
Because I believe in this community. I think I have a skill set that's going to add and help the city council. My skill set is, I've been a project manager for over 20 years, I manage multimillion-dollar projects, and there is a method to how you implement things, infrastructure, thinking long-term. I, I think those will all be helpful and something that the council has missed in previous sessions. I'm also willing to invest in this community. I won't take a salary. I will use the money that would be my salary and invest back in the community and start with grants and scholarships, using the Community Foundation of Washington County to, to, to manage that process. But I won't take a salary. I, I believe in the community so much that I would do this job for free and give that money back.
Mr. Perini?
Before I get into why to, why to vote for me, I, I'd like to take just a second, as we're looking at, you know, at the election and for the next administration, to recognize Councilwoman Shelley McIntyre, who is going off of the council, she's decided not to run for reelection, and I believe that Shelley's done an excellent job in the terms that she's been on the council. And that leads me to this thought. As a sitting councilperson, I am thrilled to be part of the team of the Hagerstown City Council as it is right now today. We all get along, we don't have infighting amongst the council members. Everybody has their strengths, and each of us recognizes each other's strengths and we lead into them. And I believe that because of that, Hagerstown is definitely going in the right direction. I think we are on the cusp of some really significant opportunities as a city. And I have been honored to be part of that now, and I look forward and hope that you'll vote for me to be part of that going forward. Thank you.
Ms. Bell?
Hagerstown, I need your vote. I'm not only a small business owner, but I'm an advocate for the youth. After I close my shop, I go to my after-school program, and I work with a group of children that struggle every day. I'm going to get a... These kids struggle every day in school, they struggle to eat, they take a 30-minute bus ride to school every day. They're the last to go to school, and they're the last to come home. They need your help. They need your resources, they need your assistance. It is the Jonathan Street community, there is no community building right now that is operating for them. So I'm there every day with them from 4:30 to 6:30. I feed them, I make sure they have soap and deodorant and anything else they need. If they miss the bus to school, they don't go, and they do that more than often. I have, I'm going to be really transparent, I had a mother that had her eighth child and got put out of housing, which left her kids with nowhere to go. I'm asking you to be a help to the children in this community. I'm asking for your vote so I can continue to advocate for them. Thank you.
Mr. Owens?
Wow. That's powerful. How do you follow that? Okay. I believe that my position on the council is to be a servant for the citizens of the city. I believe that I need to ask them, seek them for what their requests are, and then take that request and be a catalyst through the council, through the city, to actually follow through in a transparent and effective way, that everyone can see what is going on, but do it that way so that actually, at the end of the day, they get to see the results of that, that their, their requests are actually being honored. I think that is so important, that we need to be listening, listening to the people around us, our community, and acting on what the community wants, as well as those around that come in and visit with us. But we need to take care of our communities, not only Jonathan Street, but the streets around that, long, anywhere out that way. We need to be looking at everyone here and listening to them, and basically getting their requests and making them be implemented.
Mr. Alshire?
Could you repeat the question?
Why should we vote for you?
So, I'll give you the same answer if you took the time to read the circular that was sent out via email. I'm not. I don't do that, I don't go seeking endorsements or, or asking people to vote for me. I think it's real simple. You make that decision. You go out, you research the candidate, you pick the candidates that you like the best from the research you've done, and you make the decision on your own. I just, I find that question a bit hokey. No matter what venue I'm at, whether it's union or landlord and property owner association or the business community, I can't sit here and say, you should vote for me because I'm the best person. I don't send out flashy flyers and say, here's all this political rhetoric that I can give you or some partisan thing. You just do your research. You do your research on the candidates that you like best, that you think best represent your interests, and that's the candidate you vote for. You vote for the candidate you think's going to do the best job in the position that is being sought.
Mr. Bell?
My wife and I have retired here. My wife and I have retired here. I would like to make the, the city and the neighborhoods and the downtown, the citizenry safer, more comfortable. As far as retirement benefit, I have no interest in that. I don't want this as a career. I'm, I'm here to serve.
This concludes the Chamber of Commerce's forum for city council. On behalf of the Government Affairs Committee, thank you to the candidates for participating. Everyone, we thank you for coming and hope you enjoy the rest of your day.
And before you leave, let's thank Jenny Baycoast for a good job moderating. Thank you very much. I'd also like to thank the candidates, again, for putting yourselves out there, for wanting to serve the public, for wanting to make the city of Hagerstown an even better place to live, work, and enjoy life. And I really want to compliment you all on the way you've handled and expressed yourselves today. Let's give them a round of applause. And then thank each of you for being here this morning. Educate yourself on the candidates and please vote. We are, end up a little bit early today because we're short a couple of candidates. However, if you want to speak with them, I'm, I'm sure they'll, they'll be happy to talk with you. Just a reminder, at nine o'clock, the current council members cannot help you when the meter start at nine. Just remember, if you're at a meter, nine o'clock, and you might have a few minutes. So enjoy the rest of your day and thanks for being out here this morning.